Tuesday, August 20th, 2024. May we stand for the pledge? Oh, no, roll call, excuse me, roll call. I want another pledge.
Councilmember Brownstone?
Here.
Councilmember Reddick?
Here.
Vice Mayor Rarback?
Here.
Mayor Jimenez?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Thank you. If you would like to make a comment today in public forum, please do the cards. The speaker cards. We have a motion to approve the agenda, please.
So moved.
It's a second.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Brownstone?
Yes.
Councilmember Reddick?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rarback?
Yes.
Mayor Jimenez?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We move on to our proclamations and presentations.
Mayor, council, I am pleased to have the opportunity to introduce Captain Richard Chichov, who is our new director of safety and police services. And he may for some be a recognizable face. He started his career with the City of Half Moon Bay Police Department and then transitioned on to the county. So with that, welcome, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Just checking, can you hear me okay? Good evening, councilmembers. Thank you very much for having me. I am Rick Chichov, I'm your new captain. I did start here back in 2000 as part of the Half Moon Bay Police Department. While I was here, I got a chance to meet a lot of people and get a feel for what the community was like. I also got a chance to do traffic enforcement, investigate collisions, and get introduced to that also important topic of traffic on the coast. After the city contracted with the sheriff's office, I got a chance to work in corrections. I again worked traffic, worked in collision investigation. I was part of the major accident investigation team. Promoted into the training unit, where I got a chance to work with different stakeholders, work with compliance with state, federal, county, and policy guidelines. As lieutenant, I undertook most of the administrative tasks in one of our correctional facilities and was greatly honored when the sheriff promoted me to be selected to be your new captain. So thank you very much for having me. I look forward to getting to know each of you, seeing how the community has changed, getting to know your goals and your priorities moving forward, so that hopefully I can play some small part in helping you reach them. Recently, I did get a chance during National Night Out to attend several of the events. It was great getting a chance to meet some of the community, and I look forward to doing it more. And that's actually one of my priorities, one of the first things, is to get a better understanding of how things have changed and where the community is now and yourselves with your goals and priorities. Is there anything I could, and I don't know if this is the right thing to say, but is there anything you'd like to tell me or ask of me, as long as we're talking?
You're gonna have a tough act to follow. Captain Albin was really good for the coast, so I hope you follow in her footsteps and, you know, also good for the coast, so thank you.
I will do my best, sir.
Welcome back to Half Moon Bay. Looking forward to working with you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Mayor and council, next we have the CEO from Peninsula Clean Energy, Sean, who will present an update on what PCE is up to and introduce herself to the counseling community.
Thank you so much, I appreciate that. Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. It's very nice to be with you here tonight in Half Moon Bay. It was delightful to come down or across from our office and visit your town and have a little food and just check it all out. It is, it is a great spot, and I haven't been here in a while, so I'm happy to be with you. My name is Sean Marshall. I am the relatively new CEO of Peninsula Clean Energy. I've been with the company since 2022 when I joined as the chief operating officer, and then a year later when Jan Pepper retired, was promoted into the CEO role, and it has been a fantastic year. So before I dive into the content, I do want to acknowledge Vice Mayor Rarback for his excellent service on our board and Mayor Jimenez, who serves as his alternate. So thank you, gentlemen, very much for your continued service. So I will dive in now. What I'm gonna do is just a quick overview, we'll watch first a video that gives you some high-level metrics about our progress here since we launched in 2016. It seems like it was just last week, but that's really eight years ago now. And then I'll run you through quickly a couple of programs and take any questions you have. All right. Do you press play? Thank you.
Peninsula Clean Energy was founded in 2016 with a clear goal: to provide clean energy, lower rates, and to combat climate change. As a nonprofit energy provider, I'm proud to say that we've managed to slash emissions by 94%, while at the same time increasing renewables and maintaining electric generation rates at a minimum 5% below PG&E. That's over $100 million back to our customers and our community since 2016.
In the past year, we have secured our largest wing contract to date, adding over 200 megawatts of clean energy into our resource portfolio. In 2024, we expect to bring online five new projects, adding over 300 megawatts of new capacity onto the grid. This will get us within striking distance of meeting our 100% renewable goal.
Peninsula Clean Energy is showing that we don't have to make a choice between affordable rates and cleaner energy.
We don't have to satisfy corporate shareholders. Our customers are our shareholders.
Peninsula Clean Energy was started to combat climate change, but now it's so much more. The true value of community choice is that it's local. It means going to your street fair and seeing us at a booth and asking a question about your energy bill. It's also when you go to plug in your EV and seeing a charger provided by Peninsula Clean Energy. Peninsula Clean Energy serves all of our customers and our community with different language outreach and programs for all income levels.
A lot of the programs that come from Peninsula Clean Energy help our communities to take part, because many times the communities that we serve are left out with the policies that comes down to address climate change and greenhouse gas emissions.
We're helping the community install thousands of chargers, including at hard-to-reach places like apartment buildings.
So with Peninsula Clean Energy's EV-ready program, this has been so affordable. We're at 29 outlets installed, and the cost has been basically nothing. And for mom-and-pop housing providers, it's really, really important to us, because we don't have a lot of capital to spend.
The average charger in our program is being installed for about $4,000, much less than the average of $10,000 to $18,000 in other programs.
We are your local partner in building a sustainable community. Peninsula Clean Energy remains steadfast in our commitment to power our communities, combat climate change, and provide affordable clean energy to the customers we proudly serve.
Okay, thank you so much for watching. As you can see, I got a haircut, and I'm working on getting all that hair back. All right, so...
Peninsula Clean...
Nope, moving on. Okay. As a reminder, and for maybe folks who are in the audience, I always like to kind of level-set on how PCE works and what the, what the model is that allows us to exist. We are based on a law that was passed in 2002, AB 117, that essentially allows community choice aggregators, in our case Peninsula Clean Energy, to take responsibility for the procurement and generation of the electricity piece of all of your energy needs. We partner with Pacific Gas &amp; Electric, who continues to provide the gas services, all of the pole and wire infrastructure, and consolidated billing, so that at the end of the day, you as a customer benefit from lower rates and cleaner energy as a result. As I said, we launched in 2016, and since then, we've been very, very focused on affordability. As all of you know, the cost of living through the last couple of years and maybe even decades has gone through the roof in the state of California, and San Mateo County is certainly no exception to that. So our overall metrics are actually better than what you see up on the screen. I got fresh data yesterday. We have saved our customers over $175 million throughout our service territory since 2016, and we are on track to approach $200 million in savings by the end of the year. So that is, I think, very good progress and meaningful to our customers. Earlier this year, the PCE board took an unprecedented action to be responsive to customer outcry about energy rates, and the board decided to hold our rates at 2023 levels, which resulted in a 15% discount on the electric generation for our customers. PG&E then reduced its rates in June. We followed suit, and so we're currently at a 5% reduction. But we are hyper-focused on making sure that we are continuing to provide economic value as well as clean energy value. So to that end, we are also committed to decarbonizing our energy supply. Our mission is to reduce greenhouse gas reductions throughout our region and the state. You can see here, the top line is the state of California, the middle line, gray, is PG&E, and the lowest line, the navy, is Peninsula Clean Energy. And what you can see there is that essentially by 2020, '21 and '22, and we will have refreshed data soon, but the numbers are the same, we are darn near at zero emissions for our default product. And I'm very happy to say that that is going to continue into the future. So now I'll just run you through a couple of quick programs that your constituents may be interested in availing themselves of. So we do quite a lot in home electrification. The most recent program that we've rolled out that's been incredibly popular is our $10,000 0% loan. Any one of our customers can access this loan, it's a one-page application. We do not check the credit history, we don't need tax returns or any of that. It's super quick, and then folks can repay that at a 0% interest over five years, and they pay that back through their PG&E bill. And so folks can get that $10,000 loan to pay for any kind of electrification in their homes, switch over to solar, whatever it is they need to, to help the transition. Over 600 loans have been issued since we launched the program in '23, and it's, it's running apace. We also offer a number of rebates for appliances, to switch out your gas appliances to kind of new technology electric appliances. And this year, later this year, and into next year, we will be rolling out what we call a one-stop shopping electrification program, because we've received feedback that it's very hard, no matter how much you want to electrify your home or your commercial building, not only is it difficult and Byzantine and complicated, but it is also super-expensive. And so we hired an electrification concierge to help our customers, help them realize all of the economic benefits of the different pots of money around the state, so that they can stack those opportunities toward their goals. We also have a robust electric transportation program, lots of work on our EV-ready, as you saw highlighted in the, in the little video there. We are on pace to be well over 5,000 EV chargers throughout San Mateo County, with the focus on public charging, local government charging, so city facilities, and apartment buildings, multifamily housing. We have a used EV rebate program that is aimed toward our lower-income customers, so we can help them cross that bridge and get into an EV. And we have an e-bike program that we run every year. It's usually about 500 bikes per year, and they sell out quickly. So we also partner with our member agencies, including Half Moon Bay. We support the county in climate action planning through the RICAPS program, I know Half Moon Bay is part of that effort. We have a GovEV program where we will work with our cities and the county to support a transition to an EV fleet. As your cars get older and you want to transition over, we can help you electrify your, your fleet. We have a GovPV program where we are placing solar on public facilities. I believe Half Moon Bay may be part of round two, I'm not sure, but at any rate, it's, we will also be following suit with batteries to complement those solar installations. We also have a local government electrification program, those are grants and loans, again, to electrify or upgrade through energy efficiency any of your public facilities. New this year, we have a member agency energy grant. Each city was allocated a one-time grant through our surplus funds effort, and I know that Half Moon Bay has already moved forward with its application. So highlights for your city. We have almost 5,000 active accounts representing 97% participation, so I do want to thank you for your, your participation and your leadership in this area. Over 2 million at this point, having now updated the numbers, you guys are at over 2 million saved by Half Moon Bay customers since we launched. There's only one EV charger installed, but there are many more in development through, at local apartment buildings, and I think here at the city as well. There was $155,000 allocated through that member agency energy grant that I mentioned. Your staff is already well underway with plans for solar install, EV charging, and electrification at your facilities. Five of your high school students are enrolled in the youth ambassador program, and the way that we participate is that we provide a $550 stipend to any of these high school students that participate in this year-long program and complete it. And I've already acknowledged our great board members, we do have new web pages for each member agency, if you want to check back to look at what your metrics are periodically. All right, so I'm almost done. New developments this year, there's been a lot happening. One is that we've really worked to make our programs more affordable and more accessible to our customers. It's kind of about making energy easy, and I know that that is, it's not an easy topic. So we're really focusing on helping our customers. The board, several months ago, made a decision to support affordable rates by shifting our goal of 100% renewable energy from 2025 to 2030. We did that because we are in an incredibly high energy cost market, and it just was not going to pencil out and allow us to offer the kind of discounts that we want to offer. So we are incrementally moving toward that goal by 2030. Happy to report that the San Mateo County Community College District voted to join our service. They have enrolled starting in July, so they are, all of their accounts are with us now, followed soon by Caltrain. You guys may be aware of the new electrification of their fleet, and I'm very happy to say that PCE will be serving their energy needs starting in September. We are in the middle of updating our strategic plan. Vice Mayor Rarback will be involved in that here shortly. We have a customer care center that we are now bringing in-house to provide more consistent, ready service to our customers. And as I said, we are adopting a customer-centric approach to everything we do. So with that, I will say thank you for your time. Thank you from our team to yours, and I'm happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmembers, any questions? Clear front questions? Thank you for a beautiful presentation.
Very good. I hope you all have a good meeting. Thank you.
I'm Scott Bolenger again from the Midcoast Community Council, and I appreciate you having me over, and let me give you, let me give you a quick update on what's going on in the Midcoast. On the 14th, last Wednesday, we had a very robust meeting with about 150 people from the community attending in person or on Zoom. And there were two topics that we focused on at that meeting. One of them is replanning of the San Vicente Creek portion of the Golden Gate National Recreation Area. The GGNRA has, has some plans from 2014 that include a visitor center and possible camping, and some other details we discussed at the meeting. There was, the Equestrian cohort came out and forced to support their current culture in the area of Vicente Creek, and there were a lot of concerns that were brought up to the GGNRA regarding environmental issues such as water quality and fire prevention that had to do with their new plans. So they are in the replanning process for Vicente Creek. The second issue is planning for the Catch Joanne Building in the harbor. The current plan is to demolish Catch Joanne, the Catch Joanne Building and replace it with a more modernized and more modernized structure, hoping for more, for traffic and increased revenue. So if they do that, this is gonna displace some very popular tenants that reside there currently, which include the Maverick Surf Shop, the Pelagic Fish Market, Half Moon Bay Sport Fishing, and the Catch Joanne Harbor Pub. This is probably gonna have some dramatic economic repercussions for those local businesses. So my last update is that the Seton Coast Side Medical Center over there in Moss Beach has been closed for quite a long time due to storm damage. But hope, there, there is hope that they will reopen with availability to all urgent care in the spring. And I certainly look forward to that, because I do a lot of dangerous things out there, and it'd be nice to go somewhere close to get stitches or your arm fixed or some other kind of injury like that, instead of going over the mountain. And that's my update from the Midcoast. Thanks. You guys have any questions?
Do you have any questions? No?
Thanks.
No, thank you.
If I might, Mayor, just to say that September 3rd, we have Seton scheduled to come and make a presentation, so I think, stay tuned, I think it'll be a good opportunity to hear what's up and what's happening, and I think some good things.
Thank you, John. Mayor's announcements. I want to thank everybody who, who attended the event that we had August 10th in Half Moon Bay, the Vaquero Days. It was a great event with live music, lots of horses, vendors. Thank you to our chef's department for traffic control downtown. Thank you for the, to the cleanup crew, five gentlemen from the Coast House who helped us with the, with the cleaning, did an excellent job. Rob drove right after the event, was pretty clean, so thank you. We're looking forward to having this event every year, no, Vaquero Days. It's an event that was celebrated in Half Moon Bay many years ago, but I stopped. You know, this was the idea to, to continue to celebrate our heritage and to have events like Vaquero Days back in our community. And no more.
I think I'm next up.
We have, do you have any reports on my recent closed sessions?
Well, actually, we haven't had any closed sessions recently, so nothing to report out.
Thank you. City manager updates.
Jelisa will tell us about National Night Out. Thank you.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Jelisa, Costa Community Services Analyst, I will present an update on National Night Out. As you know, National Night Out is an event that encourages community building and promotes that we get to meet our neighbors and our sheriff's department, our resources around in case of emergency, fire departments, search team, cares team, and in general, neighbor, neighbors. We had a slight decline in folks who signed up this year. We had 26 last year, we had 21 this year. The reason being is because some of the neighbors decided to collaborate and just sign up as one. We had parties going from Miramar area all the way to Miramontes Point Road, and with attendance anywhere from 10 neighbors to up to 100. City staff visited, most of these parties, I think, were divided and conquered, and we saw a great success, especially with kids seeing the fire truck and the sheriffs, they were really excited. So we look forward to celebrating again next year and sharing more. We've heard great feedback from the community. Everybody was very pleased with attendance, and we've seen over the last couple of years, at least in my time attending these parties, that the increase in attendance is, it improves every year. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and we were thankful for the weather. The fog pulled back and surprised us all by pulling back. I had one more item, I just wanted to, to say something, if I may, to the council and the community members. I wanted to take this opportunity just to set the record straight in hopes that misinformation would stop being spread via social media. And this involves two issues related to Our Lady of Pillar Church and what the council and what actions are out there. I will say first, the city is not forcing nor has authority to force Our Lady of the Pillar to do anything with their property. I think we made that, and you made that clear at the special meeting held on the housing element, but I wanted to reinforce that and make sure that was clear. The church is wholly responsible for whether or not to develop their property and for what purpose they seek to develop the site for. We again, I think, made this clear, but want to just reiterate this and hope that the discourse in the community can stop and that people will basically get the facts straight and understand what is and what is not true. The second piece is a, is a piece of this as well, is to say that the city is not forcing the church to provide parking for 555 Kelly. There was an ask, and Our Lady of Pillar said, "No, thank you." End of story. That's it, nothing more, nothing less. And so again, we hope that this sets the record straight a bit, and hope we, folks will call us, ask questions if they have questions, and again, hope that the discourse and some of the information making its way through social media will cease and allow things to settle out. Thank you.
Thank you, John. We move on to our public forum.
Thank you, Kristalyn, from the Coast Side Chamber of Commerce and Opportunity Center of the Coast Side. And I just wanted to let everybody know that as of yesterday, the Opportunity Center can now refill or issue new Clipper cards. So Clipper cards are a card that is accepted at all Bay Area transit, including Sam Trans, Bart, Caltrain, and we found out about three weeks ago that the closest Clipper Card refill station was... And we found out about three weeks ago that the closest Clipper Card refill station was more than 30 minutes in any direction of us. So our sweet Stephanie did all the work and made it so that we can do that now. So if people have or want Clipper Cards, you can now come down to 637 Main Street, and we're able to help you out. Thank you. Live scan coming soon.
Yay, thank you. All right, next, Paul Nagengast.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council. My name is Paul Nagengast. I live at 229 Valdades Avenue, and I wanted to let the community know that I'm running for City Council in District 3. I'm your voice for positive change. I want this quick opportunity just to introduce myself to the community and let everybody know if I'm elected, I'm committed to improving the city's financial stability, ensure consistent implementation of city's laws and regulations, improve safety along Highway 1 corridor, and keep local control. I want the community to remember it is your city, your vision, your future. With that said, there's three items on the consent agenda, 1B, 1C, 1D, that I have questions about. There's credit card purchases, $41,000, $32,000, $34,000, total $108,000. Says citywide small purchases on credit cards. Just curious what those small purchases are that total $108,000. And in June, there was a payment made to CCWD and $480,900 for a, out of a sewer connections. It was related to Stone Pine Road. So I'm not sure, was it, is it just a miss in that description, or is it something that sewer monies were paying CCWD? Again, thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Paul. No more speakers? No? Thank you. I'll move on to our consent calendar. Can I get a motion to approve that consent calendar?
Actually, I'd like to pull some items.
We'd like to pull some items.
Yes, I'd like to pull items B, C, D, and E.
Unless there are any other items to pull, you can go ahead and ask for a motion for the...
Any more items to be pulled? May I have a motion?
I move that we approve Consent Calendar Items 1A, waive reading of resolutions and ordinances. Item 1F, Mayor's amended list of council representatives and designated assignments for 2024, receipt of legislative position letter, and 1H, resolutions of support for two grant applications to the San Mateo County Transportation Authority for the Cycle 7 Pedestrian and Bicycle Grant Program. And I think that's it.
One aye.
One aye.
Oh. Oh, yeah. The Citizens Option for Public Safety COPS Grant Program, fiscal year 2024-25.
Second.
All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
So, do you want to start with item B and ask, I assume we just want to take the items right now rather than defer to a later point? Is there, are there questions?
Well, I had the same question as Mr. Nagengast about the credit card charges, but he, I think, discussed a couple of other items, and I'm not sure whether it was B, C, or D that he had questions about, but I also have a question related to our ability to pay invoices for Job Train. And the reason is, we have a member who is employed by Job Train, and I'm wondering if there are Government Code 1090 concerns about that.
I can, I can respond to that question. I, I think staff is also working on, I'll leave it to John in terms of the other questions, but I can, I can respond to the Government Code 1090 questions because this is sort of a similar analysis as, has come up with the mayor's former employer, employment with ALAS. So Government Code 1090 sort of in general prohibits cities from contracting with city council members that have a financial interest in the contract. There are exceptions, however, and specifically exceptions for nonprofit entities and employees of nonprofits. So, for example, you know, the city's had a small grants program for many years and routinely has contracted with, entered into contracts with ALAS for the community services grants. And as you recall, the, the mayor, when, when he was employed by ALAS, always recused himself, and that is pursuant to Government Code 1090. He was an employee of a nonprofit, and under that exception, the city may enter into the contract so long as the, the council member recuses from that decision. With Job Train, I think it's basically the same analysis in terms of, of the mayor being an employee of a nonprofit. If there were decisions, contracts that come before council with respect to that, that would, I think it's a little bit, a little bit confusing because I'm not sure if the council has entered into contracts with Job Train specifically or with another entity that then subcontracts. But in any event, I would recommend that the mayor recues on any contract that the council considers with either Job Train specifically or any entity that's subcontracting or contracts with Job Train.
My concern was, looking at the 1090 guide, you know, it basically says, it's not enough, and the guide, it says it's not enough to recuse yourself, and in fact, the entire board needs to recuse itself and not act. Now, that's talking about enter into, enter into a contract as opposed to voting on a payment. But, you know, this contract with Job Train expires at the end of September, and so I think a 1090 analysis is on point about whether the council can do that when we have a member that's on both sides of the contract. And, you know, if in fact, it extends to our ability to authorize payment of bills, I'd be concerned about that. So I'm not targeting my fellow council member. I'm trying to also protect myself and the other members of the board. So I, I think we need a write-up. At the very least, as a prelude to renegotiating a contract in September. I'd like to see something in writing that protects the entire city council. And, you know, and if you say it's okay for us to approve authorized payment tonight, you know, happy to do that, but I understand you're asking that our fellow council member to recuse.
I, I guess I wasn't aware that there was an item on for payment tonight. The, but the Government Code 1090 specifically refers to the contract as opposed to the, the payment. I would, I would leave it up to council. I always err on the side of caution, so because the rules are, are around contracts, I think it would be out of the buttons of caution, but if there's an item tonight that's a payment to Job Train, I would recommend, you know, recusal on that. I'm not sure which warrant list that falls under.
I think it's on all three.
So if, if I could just clarify, these items are receive and file. They are not approved. They've already been approved. So we were asked to, you know, to, we're asked to bring these forward. It's part of the process, but this is not the council approving those actions. It's just simply accepting the record and the filing. I don't know if that changes perspective on it. But, but that is what the item is on the consent, on the consent calendar.
Well, I would still ask for an analysis as a prelude to the expiration of the contract and bring it forward.
Yes, I hear that direction. I think that's, that's prudent. Thank you.
Just to confirm, you say these bills are already paid? Is that what I heard? I still think there's a member of the public who had questions about it, so before we act...
Good evening, council. As you know, the warrants file under Finance, which is under Administrative Services, Ken is also logging on in case there's any specific questions that I can't answer, or we can also get information. So I was just, I'm here to answer questions about the warrants list, and yes, those are a list of our bills that we have paid, and we were a couple of months, as you saw, behind. So you had three months of bills, and those were three months of checks and bills that we have paid to date, and that's why we itemize them out. But I also heard that you had questions about the credit cards?
Yeah, I mean, there's like $108,000, and it's not itemized as to what we're actually paying for. It seems like a lot of money.
We, we, well, these are actually credit cards for all the departments. We authorize Todd to make Public Works purchases also through, although he has a certain limit. We all have limits that we can't go over, but we actually do the purchases for all the departments, which includes Public Works, City Manager's Office, City Clerk, Admin Services, and we actually receive an itemized list in the Finance Department. We scrutinize the list. We actually have to go through the list. The department head goes through the list, and then Ken and I both go through the list. If there's any questionable charges, we go back to the department head, and that's why the, the amounts on the warrants list, again, is just the bills being paid. And so the process right now, the policy, is that the Finance Department actually goes through, scrutinizes. Of course, the auditor also has those things at the end of the year when we do the audit. The auditor goes through the bills to ensure that we caught anything, which fortunately, we haven't caught anything that is not actually within the guidelines of what we are to purchase and how we're to purchase it. That's why you don't see an itemized list of the credit card bill. And I don't know if Ken's on, if he wants to add something to that and more, talk about the more formal process. Ken, are you there?
Oh, yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes. So we're talking about credit cards, and I was just describing how we get the bills. The department goes through, the department director goes through the charges, and we itemize, we have receipts for every single purchase to validate that what it was for and how the credit card was used. And then the department head will sign off on it, and then it comes to Administrative Services. Either Ken or I go through the list again, verifying the receipts, and then we sign off on it, and then Ken sends the payment to Wells Fargo. Ken, is there a step I'm missing, or is there anything you'd like to add?
No, that's, that's the entire process. The only thing is that I think we sent three months' worth of warrants this session, so we usually run around between 30 and 40 K a month, so it's not always, council doesn't always see 100 in one go. It's just, this, this, it's tonight. You're looking at three months' worth.
I, I would only add to that in saying that every expenditure that is made is consistent with the operating budget and the approved budgets for those departments. We understand, I understand the questions about those specific, but to be clear, these are not in addition to or beyond what has already been budgeted by the council, went through public process. So just to be clear for, for the council and the community on that piece. I, I can also respond to the item that was brought up by Mr. Nagengast regarding the sewer versus water on the item. It was a mis, mischaracterization. It said Coastside County Water District, which is correct, for $480,900. It was check 54817. It says on the description sewer connections. It's water connections for Stone Pine Cove, and that money was paid from the state funds provided for that project. It was not general fund or any other source with that. So it just, it was an error in the description in the staff report. We apologize for that.
Do we have any more questions? Any clarifying comments?
I have a question. What happens if we don't accept the warrants? What's the consequence of that?
That's a great question. The bills have already been paid, as I, as I understand it, so this is a bit of a formality. I, I'm not aware of any consequence, actually, and I'll defer to Ken if he's still on the line, but the bills have been, have already been paid. This is a matter of transparency.
Yeah, I just want to second that, that the bills have already been paid, and yeah, this is a transparency acceptance item.
Yeah, I was just going to say that it actually does say accept the warrants list, not authorize to pay. So there's a difference in just accepting the report. It's more of a informational, this is what we're paying the bill, this is what we paid this last month. It's like we're balancing the checkbook, and we're giving you the checkbook to look at.
Thank you, Lisa. Thank you, Ken. Do you have any more questions from, from council members? No, may I have a motion to approve those items?
I move that we accept the warrants for the month of April 2024, and that we accept the warrants for the month of May 2024, and the warrants for the month of June 2024, and that we accept the treasurer's report for the quarter ending June 30th.
No, I pulled the treasurer's report. I'd like, I'd like to have a presentation on the treasurer's report. So happy to do B, C, and D.
Okay.
Second. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I would just like a presentation on the treasurer's report.
Ken, could you do a quick presentation on the treasurer's report?
Sure. So the treasurer's report is a quarterly report, just detailing out what our cash balances are for the city at a particular date, and this one was at the June 30th date. And, excuse me, one moment here. Making sure I have the report up in front of me. So that, that June 30th, the city had $51 million in, in our bank accounts, divvied up between four different bank accounts. So we have our Wells Fargo operation account. We have monies with the states called LEAF. This is pretty much, we just hold these monies there to, to build interest on. And then the San Mateo County Treasurer, which is also a bank account that we use to gain interest on, and, and sometimes the county likes a deposit, property tax remittance here. For the quarter, the average yield was about 3.9%. This is up almost by one whole percent from last year at this time. This is from an effect of, so over the past, I would say, 18 months or so, the Fed has been increasing interest rates, and we've, we've, we've come up to the 3.9%. On the second page of the report is how these funds break down by how the cash breaks down per fund. So in the general fund in particular, we have $14 million in cash. This isn't, this is different from our fund balance in that the fund balance that I will report out at a later council with the financial report is going to include... is going to include everything as far as any bills that we may have outstanding, any unrealized gains or losses, and all in the final cleanup. But our cash balance on June 30th is, in the general fund, is about 14 mil. And then our total again is 51 mil. And then on the bottom of the second page is just a reconciliation between our bank accounts and anything that's outstanding and our petty cash. And that's pretty much it. I'll take some questions if council has any. This is an acceptance report as well, and something that we have to do quarterly as dictated by the state and our auditors.
Yeah, so I asked staff, actually before this meeting, to run through the numbers on the Affordable Housing Account, because I've had questions from different members of the community, and there have been statements out there on on social media, you know, what are we spending from the Affordable Housing Account? What's actually there? What's going in? What's going out? So I thought if we could just have a brief summary from Mr. Dowdy, who's already given that to me, but I think it's good for the public to hear about where we are on the Affordable Housing Account.
Sure, thank you. As indicated, on a gross basis, there's approximately $5.9 million in the Affordable Housing Fund as of June 30th. This includes 1.5 million grant from the county, which is for pre-development cost on 555 Kelly, and $2 million committed from Becker and from the state for farmworker housing. And at this point, it's been acknowledged to that site, although it's still flexible in terms of where that ultimately goes, as long as it's farmworker housing. 88D Stone Pine, there is $1.25 million grant from Mr. Berman and the state. And there is a remaining balance on that as of June 30th of about 769,100. You saw the, and we discussed the issue of the water connections. That's where a large chunk of that money came from to pay that. And then we have committed approximately $270,000 from the fund for rent stabilization, rent registry, and related tenant protection programs. And that leads to an unassigned fund balance of $1.7 million, and that equates to roughly $5.9 million. If I would say on the rent registry and rent stabilization, the objective there was, and you attached and approved resolutions, which created fees for the registry and for the rent stabilization, you approved for a period of time for rent registry, a no-charge point. And so we are collecting those fees and dealing with that. And over time, this year, we will figure out what the actual operating cost and everything will be. So we'll true that up a bit, and we'll only expend what we need to expend out of the Affordable Housing Fund for that purpose.
So what remains of our own money in the Affordable Housing Account from the 2.1 million that was there originally?
1.7 million remains from the city's original Affordable Housing Funds that were primarily generated through Karnusti.
Okay, great. And then one last question. So you said approximately $760,000 for water hookups at Stone Pine Cove?
$480,000 for the water connections at Stone Pine Cove.
And that's for how many units?
That is, I believe, 30 equivalent water units is what has been calculated out. Now, that was for the units themselves. There's still some truing up to deal with once they look at irrigation plans and for the park area and some of the open space. So we expect a little bit more in the connection capacity requirements, but shouldn't be too significant.
So that math works out to how much per unit?
Oh, goodness.
I'm just wondering, you know, is that amount coming down?
Who can do that math really quickly there? 480 divided by 47 units, or actually by 30 units. But it, one could, you can do it two different ways. If you take 480,000 and take, divide it by the total number of units that we're dealing with, it's about $10,000 per water connection. With that, if you, it would, you know, based on the 30, it's a little different. These are allocated from a mixture of Affordable Housing and Coastide Priority Water Connections.
Great. So there's a real savings there for this project. Yeah, great. Okay, that's all I got.
Do we have any more questions, comments? John, thank you for clarifying the cost per unit on the water connections. I think the committee needs to know. Thank you for asking that question. $10,000 per water connection on all these units. So that's pretty cheap. We have the savings.
I move we accept the treasurer's report.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We'll just note for the record, there was that error in terms of what that was identified for on the one sheet for 480,000. Thanks.
Okay, we're going to take a break. Come back at 8:05. See you back 8:05. Thank you. Welcome back. We move on to our resolutions and staff reports.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council and community. My name is Moaz Billz-Guigney. I'm the Public Works Director and City Engineer with Hafman Bay. I am here tonight to present the San Mateo County Wide Local Roadway Safety Plan and Hafman Bay Chapter. Just a brief overview of the presentation topics. I won't read them off the list. But what is a local road safety plan? It identifies for an agency, what actions can be taken to align with safe systems and approaches. As you can see on the image on the right, the system approach focuses on five elements. The most common is an agency's control are safe roads and safe speeds. Less directly under the control, but still relevant, are the safe road users and post-crash care, as well as safe vehicles, which is something that happens more with respect to legislative and outside of the purview of our local agencies, but still very relevant to our work. The local roadway safety plan also provides a benchmarking of existing and historical safety so that we can answer what is leading to these types of incidents that cause death and severe injury on our local roads. It also identifies actions, projects, and partners to carry out these solutions with the ultimate goal of reducing death and severe injuries on our local roadway networks. So a local safety plan, again, what is a local safety plan? For us, for the purpose of this document, it is a, with the City-County Association of Governments, C-CAG, which the city of Hafman Bay is a partner too, went down this path of creating a countywide safety plan. And ultimately, what that, what came from that was a countywide network for our local roadways prioritization, but also provided a chapter for some of the local jurisdictions that did not have an existing document. At the time when this was being put together through C-CAG, Hafman Bay did not have its own safety plan. Ultimately, this region-wide vision to advance this roadway safety, it made sense that some entity like C-CAG would be, would run point on this. But really, what we want to do moving forward is, this is a living document. And additionally, we'll talk a little bit more about next steps. But ultimately, this puts us in position, which is, this is one of the more important pieces. It puts us in position to be eligible for certain grant opportunities. And that's the main reason why we're here tonight with this countywide plan. Now, as we, as we talked about, as I've mentioned in the past in other presentations, we also have our own local safety plan that we are going to be kicking off very shortly. And I'll talk a little bit more about that towards the end. But overall, this planned document provided those individual chapters for 10 of the jurisdictions. Again, Hafman Bay is one of them. On the right, you can see a, you can see a crash frequency graph. This shows all, these are reported injury and fatal crash frequencies. And this, it was, the snapshot of data that was provided through this process was between 2017 and 2021. As we work on our own individual plan, we will be looking at that and those numbers and providing updates to that based on, based on the reported incidents that have happened. Additionally, the C-CAG's countywide plan shows all agencies that are most recently, recent quantitative targets. Collectively, what we're trying to do is this, is move forward with a vision for the reduction of fatal and severe injuries by 2050. And that's a countywide goal, and it's a state goal. The local goal is not, is included here, and for us, it's really about, we're pushing to be ambitious. The goal is to reduce all fatal accidents to zero. It's a goal that we will, we will continue to strive for, again, through many different ways, in things that are tangible, like capital projects that this local jurisdictions and the county have more control over, to legislation towards self-driving cars and things, and technology advancements in the future. And as I said, our local city goal is to eliminate all traffic fatalities and reduce non-fatal crashes by 50% by 2050. This will be, this happens through multiple types of recommendations. It's a collaborative, this is a collaboration between agencies and departments within the city of Hafman Bay, as well as working with our local, with other partners in the region. We also continue to work and participate in county working groups. C-CAG has a congestion management group that I attend as part of, as a staff representative for the city of Hafman Bay. And we also look at adopting local resolutions to support these types of visions like we're proposing tonight. Overall, the plan development was put together through a collaboration with multiple stakeholders and public entities. The agencies that were represented are here. It's all of the City-County Associations of Governments within the county of San Mateo, as well as our partners at the Metropolitan Transportation Commission, our transit supporters, Sam Trans, BART, the school districts, San Mateo County Office of Education, San Mateo County Health, as well as Silicon Valley Bicycle Coalition, Caltrans, and a number of others. This, they, all of these groups, including city staff, provided, and city, and the public of Hafman Bay, provided some input along the way, as well as reviewing some of the deliverables that were incorporated into the ultimate plan that is presented tonight. The plan development did incorporate some community input, and as a countywide system, it was spread out throughout the communities. And so for the city of Hafman Bay, almost a year to the date, August 19th of 2023, was when C-CAG had a pop-up at the farmer's market just outside Shoreline Station, where we received a good amount of feedback from the patrons that were there at the time. And as I mentioned, you know, as we go forward with our own local plan, there will be much more opportunities for local input. That will be one of the primary focuses of our local plan as we move forward. There were multiple opportunities as part of the plan development where we were providing information to the local public. We've, we had highlighted this in E-News in the past, as well as providing updates to the City Council and Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee as this plan was being developed, and received a good amount of feedback through those different groups. We also hosted, there was also a web map hosting a number of online working sessions as well, where individuals from the community and, as well as local staff, were able to participate and provide comments and feedback so that we can finalize this chapter for Hafman Bay as best as we could to capture all of the feedback that we had received. Here, I'll walk through a very high-level review of the analysis completed to develop our plan using five years of crash data that was developed into a high-injury network for pedestrian, bicyclists, and motorists. The locations that are shown with the highest frequency and severity of crashes countywide were put on this countywide map. And as you can see, there was some local priority locations too, which will show up on the next slide. There was also some summarized characteristics that were most associated with the fatal and severe injury outcomes, as noted in some of those emphasis areas. And again, those will, we have a little bit more information as far as the, for, as far as for Hafman Bay, the emphasis areas were pedestrian, no surprise, pedestrian and bicycle safety. That was something that was across the county. Nighttime and low-light safety was something that was brought up through conversations, as well as unsignalized intersections and arterial, along our arterials and collectors, which are our more major roadways, thinking like Main Street, Kelly Avenue, Poplar, Highway 1, of course. There was also a vulnerable age group. Youth and aging communities were highlighted as one of the other areas of concern. For us, it was also, for Hafman Bay, it was also motor vehicle speed-related roadway segment crashes and high-speed roadways overall. And unfortunately, there was also alcohol involvement in, as a high concern with respect to safety. So as far as for Hafman Bay, the data that was used, we were identified into three factors. So identify the top locations for each jurisdiction. And for Hafman Bay, specifically, it was the crash history. So the highest reported five-year crash frequency and severity. There was a social equity component with respect to project, where a project would benefit disadvantaged populations in line with future grant opportunities, as well as systemic factors, such as roadway and land use characteristics associated with those types of crashes and with respect to frequency and severity. Two notes, the locations here are ranked, were ranked against each other within each jurisdiction. So there wasn't a prioritization between multiple jurisdictions. Each jurisdiction was looked at separately. And then with respect to the systemic factors, it allows for a predictive opportunity to identify some of these target locations, even if accidents have not, have yet to occur. Factors like high-posted speeds that we know are associated with crash frequency, as well as severity, plus those proximities to schools. Ultimately, what was recommended as well as policies and programs for the city of Hafman Bay were listed here. There was a number of safe system recommendations, such as looking at local cultural shift. This is more on the policy side, which is providing, looking at media campaigns to highlight areas of concern and promote education to the overall population. There was also a policy potentially looking at implementing car-free zones in certain areas and neighborhoods. areas and neighborhoods. We've, we do, we do, the next item on the list is our local enforcement coordination, this is something that we've been doing with our sheriff's office for the last number of years, which is providing speed monitoring awareness, those speed radar feedback trailers that you see on our local roads and streets at times, that's, those are, those locations are identified in advance and coordinated with our law enforcement to provide those things, to provide those notifications out to the public in, in, in proper time. There's also looking at additional local funding and providing dedicated local funding towards equitable investments and prioritizations, which the city of Half Moon Bay has been doing through our capital improvement program for the number of, for a number of years at this point, and will continue to do so. There's, and then there's another, a big component, this is something that we will be working with Cabrera Unified School District, which is local education and outreach. There's going to be opportunities for funding as well, to do more targeted outreach to our, to our schools and our children, and so that's something that we're going to be looking at doing shortly. And then there's also just overall evaluation of our, of our program. As I mentioned, this chapter that's part of the countywide network is just a starting point for the city of Half Moon Bay. We were able to obtain grant funding through the U.S. Department of Transportation, through the Federal Highway Administration. We have a grant, we have a project of $150,000, 130 of which is grant-funded, to do our own specifically targeted local road safety plan. And that'll be something that we're working on, we'll be working on this coming, this current fiscal year. We, as far as a timeline update, we just received our grant agreement with the Federal Highway Administration, and so we are looking at putting out a request for proposals to, to obtain a traffic engineering consulting firm, so we can do more targeted outreach and a more localized plan that meets our specific needs. So as far as, as far as tonight and next steps, as we mentioned, we do have the adoption of the CCG plan before us tonight. That provides us with what we are seeking with respect to the eligibility for certain grant funding opportunities. We are, and so that, that slides right into the next one, as far as the safety grant funding that's available out there. And then we're going to continue participating through our countywide transportation safety advisory committee. This is something that will be formed by CCG, and as far as our involvement, we will, we will be working closely with our partners in the county, as well as the county, to look at areas of concern, to talk about best practices, what folks have, have done in certain communities, what's worked well, what hasn't, so that we can do lessons learned and share those ideas. We also are going to look at implementing and tracking our progress with respect to our plan. And, and again, as we develop our own local plan, we will have more specific goals and targets that we will bring back to the city council and provide updates as we, as we track those moving forward. And then as I mentioned, once we have our, once we are able to move forward with our RFP process, we will be commencing on our, our own citywide local road safety plan through that grant funding source, and you can, and folks can anticipate quite a bit of outreach and communication for that. We will have pop-up events, we will look at also doing some online webinars and outreach, and we will, so that'll be something that we will formulate as we put that, that plan together. I envision this also being opportunities to get into some of the schools, and talk with some of the schools, and get feedback from not just the children, but also parents. It's a fantastic way to engage our overall population, and, and of course, our senior co-siders. So we're going to be working with a lot of our, our community partners as we put this program out, and, and ask for community feedback. So that's, that's it as far as my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Council members, any clarifying questions? No clarifying questions, no? Okay, we have a speaker, Paul Nagangas.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Councilmember. My name is Paul Nagangas. Is this on now? There it is. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Councilmembers. My name is Paul Nagangas, and I live at 229 Valdez Avenue. I do support staff's recommendation that you adopt a resolution approving the countywide and city of Half Moon Bay local roadway safety plan and the Vision Zero Goals. The county and the accompanying city of Half Moon Bay report has many engineering technical terms and solutions. Each solution will need to be specific to each location. However, the county report emphasized a proactive approach that purely, than just a purely reactive approach to find solutions to Vision Zero Goals. As you know, ongoing concerns at the intersections of Highway 1, Kelly Avenue, and Highway 1, Redondo Beach Road, together with recent approvals of projects near these intersections would be examples of implementing a proactive approach now to address pedestrian bicycle and vehicular safety. Furthermore, as the agenda report outlined, the city will complete its own standalone safety plan. And this, the citywide plan would be wonderful not only to address, I know there's been talk about the south end of town from 92 South, but also the north end of town that's experiencing coastal retreat in the county and Half Moon Bay, and that is definitely altering traffic patterns, when they're doing different one-way streets, so it's something that's timely to have on a citywide program. And in addition, the ability to have a standalone roadway plan for Half Moon Bay that can integrate with the adjacent San Mateo County plans along the two Highway 1 and 92 corridors, produce wonderful opportunities for coordinated project submittals, grant funding, state, federal, I know San Mateo County loves, Transit Authority loves to have coordinated projects, so this is a great opportunity, I support totally, the city should adopt, and thank you for allowing me to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Council members?
Just a brief comment. You know, it's, this is only going to work if it really is results in action. It's very bureaucratic terminology. We certainly want to reduce fatalities. We average three a year in Half Moon Bay, that's unacceptable. I just want to point out two projects, which I think, on my own personal knowledge, would really make a big difference, they're mentioned in the report. One is the Kelly Avenue Complete Streets Project, that would allow more bike lanes, safety crosswalks, blinking signs, that, you know, I live right near there, and I can see how dangerous it is. So all the way from the ocean to Main Street on Kelly, I think should get the highest priority. And then the other project that stuck out to me was the Main Street North Project. Right now, it's a total mess. Lewis Foster Boulevard is a real nightmare, lack of good bicycle paths, pedestrian ways. So I understand there's a lot in this report, and I just thought I'd throw my two cents in for those two projects, so thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Any other comments from council? Yes?
Since the issue of intersection of Kelly and Highway 1 came up, and we have those dangerous pork chops there, I remember Caltrans was here, and they had a $5 million project to do a lot of work on Highway 1, and I would hope that we can revisit some conversations with them, because it seems like the money ran out, that pork chops were originally on that plan, then it came off. So that's continued to be on my mind, to further explore that with Caltrans, maybe get some county help in chatting them up and finding out just exactly how much extra that would cost, because we never really had a solid number on that, as I recall, right? It was just up in the ether there, and, or maybe there's something even in the existing plan, I don't know, where we can switch some money over to that, and then find something that's less dangerous, that's part of that $5 million plan, not to have to, to put that off a little bit. Because I think that everyone agrees those pork chops have been an ongoing hazard, you know, waiting for something to happen, so yeah, I'd like to see us maybe revisit that with Caltrans, bring them back and get a little more detail about what the heck is going on from their side, so.
Vice Mayor?
We saw a representation of the way to actually do the Kelly Avenue, Kelly Avenue, Highway 1 intersection. And that was presented to us, it would be not, it wouldn't be cheap, it would involve bulb-outs, much more raised medians, and noticed the driver's lack of free right turns, a whole bunch of stuff. And it, that I hope is the direction that we can go in in that very dangerous intersection. Thanks.
Thank you. Council member?
So as your representative on CCG, I was one of, you know, the 20-member cities that actually voted to approve this plan, and it is just a start. I would like to see it on our website, you know, to let people know that we're working on this issue, and that there's countywide working on the issue, and it's, it's actually going to be a priority, I think, end up being a priority in the county's strategic plan for, for transportation. But one thing that I think I've seen is very effective, looking at grant awards at, at CCG, is the umbrella of Safe Routes to School. You know, everybody cares about Safe Routes to School, and there's been quite a bit of money in recent years, you know, assigned to that category of projects. And the thing about our key intersections that you both were talking about, is that they are routes to school, you know, that Lewis Foster Drive in the High School, you know, Kelly Avenue for, for Hatch and Cunha. And then we have at the other end of Main Street, you know, we have the, the private school, and it has a crosswalk, and there are issues there. So I think a focus on Safe Routes to School and engaging the school community, and they have a wonderful leader on Safe Routes to School, you know, that's working on the issues for the school district. So I know that she's been actively engaged, I'd like to keep her engaged. So I, I think that's one way, and one pot of funding that would be, you know, critical for us to move forward on those key intersection improvements, so. I agree with Harvey and Robert about the priority areas, I'm just suggesting a way to, to get at the funding, that everybody can resonate with, so.
Thank you. Could we, would it be possible for us to get a follow-up from Caltrans about the pork chops on Kelly Avenue? Is, have they, was that something we brought up and it continues to come up?
I can reach, I've been in contact with the project manager for Caltrans with respect to that project after the council approval, post-appeal, it was appealed to the California Coastal Commission, my understanding that it's on the agenda for the November Coastal Commission meeting. I will reach out to them and, and see if I can request their presence at a future council meeting to discuss this particular issue with respect to that, that intersection. And just since, since I have the opportunity, and I didn't mention it during the presentation, we did actually submit an application to the Active Transportation Program grant for Kelly Avenue from, for the entirety, the entire stretch of, of Kelly Avenue, including the modifications that the community had brought forward with respect to Highway 1 and Kelly. We should be hearing back from the state on that application towards the end of this calendar year, and we're really hopeful that even if we don't get the full grant amount, that we can get a portion and at least start moving forward on design and environmental.
Thank you, and I really appreciate staff's work, you know, keeping that on the radar screen and looking out for those opportunities, because I think everyone agrees, so glad staff is keeping top of mind, so thanks, that's great.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for a great report. Make a motion.
I move that we adopt a resolution approving the countywide and city of Half Moon Bay local roadway safety plan and accompanying Vision Zero Goals.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Brownstone?
Yes.
Councilmember Reddick?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rarback?
Yes.
Mayor Jimenez?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on to item 3B.
I decided I wouldn't torture you with a PowerPoint. Yay, we hear you, we listen. So this item is a request to approve Amendment Number 1 to the Professional Services Agreement with SWCA for Biological Monitoring at Stone Pine Cove Housing Development Project Site. The staff report goes into some of the, the nitty-gritty details, including there was a, a red-legged, there is a red-legged frog still present in a, in a, in an old vault from the nursery. Tomorrow afternoon, we have a special certified biologist coming, and hopefully this week, that poor red-legged frog will be relocated to happy hunting grounds in the Pillar Cidos Creek area with that. We also, just, you know, that site has been a difficult one because of those issues. Obviously, we want to be very careful with this, the cost of, of a take, or an incident or harassment is a very expensive one for enlisted species, and, and we want to stay away from that. We initially entered into the original contract and had hoped for a relatively simple and easy path to, to the biological monitoring, that did not pan out. Now, I will say, we're, we are asking for a, what I would consider a large sum of money. And that includes the original 30, roughly $30,000 contract, but it also includes additional inspection time and oversight time, about 150 hours. We do not think that's going to be necessary, but for the purposes of just being expeditious and making that happen, we have requested the full authority on this. We also are working on some issues with fencing and clarifying work there and also the site, and we believe that this will also reduce the cost down significantly. So this is a worst-case, absolute worst-case scenario we see getting through construction, but I envision this being a substantially less amount ultimately spent. The good news from, from one perspective is, this is not general fund money, it is from the state funds, but that also means that there's less for other purposes for those state funds for the project. So we want to be good stewards of public funds, whether they are our own-generated general fund, or they are taxpayers' dollars redirected back to the, the city via the state. So our request is for approval of this, and we, but we do believe that this will come down substantially in cost and, and deal with that. And just for the record, we indicated in a, in a recent report, we have been at a stand-down on the site, we had to red-tag the site because of some concerns and issues with contractor, we are, it appears, getting ready to probably next week restart work, so the timing for getting the, the red-legged frog relocated is, is, is great for, and hopefully they will be successful in that quickly. But that, that's basically the report and our recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any clarifying questions? Do you have any comments? We have a motion.
I move that we adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute Amendment Number 1 to the Professional Service Agreement with SWCA Environmental Consultants, and the total amount of $205,652.31 to provide biological monitoring during construction activities at the Stone at the Stone Pine Cove Affordable Housing Project located on a portion of 880 Stone Pine Road.
Second.
Have a roll call?
Councilmember Brownstone?
Yes.
Councilmember Reddick?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rarback?
Yes.
Mayor Jimenez?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Do, let's see, that's it? We have any, any future items to act, discuss for the, for your agenda items? No? Reports from commissions, community updates? No? City council reports? No? Meeting adjourned? Thank you.